Very good. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the general board meeting to order. Welcome to everyone who is watching this recording and of course, welcome to all of our trustees. We are going to begin tonight with welcoming back Cindy Schaefer. She is renewing for another term as a trustee. Cindy, of course, is such a valued member of our board. We're ecstatic to have her back. Cindy, will you please read your oath of office for us tonight?
One second. Sorry to interrupt. Cindy, you're going to have to call me back.
Can we try? Cindy, will you mouth your oath of office to us tonight?
Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me, everybody?
Yes, go ahead, Cindy.
Okay. I, Cindy Schaefer, do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and faithfully discharge my duties as a trustee of the Rocky River Public Library by Oakdale County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and enforce it with the law now and then. And hereafter, to be an active servant of the state of Ohio, and still am qualified and qualified.
Thank you very much, Cindy, and welcome back. We're delighted.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to the technology issues for having to lie.
Oh, that's quite all right. We're, you know, flexible and we'll get through it. Don't worry about it. All right, we'll move on ahead then to public comment. Jamie, do you have anything?
I do not have any additional public comments for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Business of the board, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 2020 regular meeting. Did anyone have any comments or corrections to those minutes? All right. If not, may I have a motion to approve those minutes? And remember, if you can identify yourself for Trent, he's taking our minutes tonight in Will's absence. May I have a motion to approve?
Dave moves.
Thank you, Dave. May I have a second?
Melissa's seconds.
Thank you, Melissa. Trent, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yeah.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Abstain.
Abstain, Sony.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Trent. Well done. See, not so scary, right? All right, we're going to move on to the finance committee report. Melissa?
So we did resume our meeting and we spent quite a bit of time listening to the health insurance proposals from Becky, our wonderful representative. And I don't believe we have all the numbers in yet, but I'll let Jamie talk about that. So that was the bulk of our meeting. We also reviewed the monthly finances, asked a few questions about that, and there were some new projections about where we might be a few months from now with very different variables. So we talked about those as well. And that is what I have to report. But if there are questions, I know that, I know we had some questions and I'm sure that Jamie, between Jamie and Trent, I'm sure that those questions could be answered for those who were not in attendance to that meeting.
Overall, I believe that what Will conveyed during that meeting was that we are in a good place. The projections that he showed all of us, I want everyone to take a really close look at just in case. But we do need to know, you know, best case and worst case scenarios of how things can go. But I think as of right now, Jamie, Trent, jump in here. Will seemed comfortable with where we are.
Yes, we are in a good spot and I think that that is through, you know, as we talked about in previous meetings, our use of the laddered CDs with the third as well as the STAR and STAR Plus Ohio account, as well as just in general, good fiscal management by the board. So there weren't any real issues with that and I believe it was, next month, we'll have a better picture based on our July 15th. That was the new tax deadline, both federal and state. So we should see a slight increase from what we normally would receive in our August PLF. And August through the end of the year, we'll also be able to see better where we stand as far as the year-to-date, actual receipts, et cetera.
Right. Anyone have any questions about the financial statements, the check report, any of those?
Yeah, just on the financial stuff, it seems like that STAR Ohio plus thing is a minus. Is there any reason why we're not just all in the regular STAR and just get out of that STAR plus? Do we have to use it?
So at one point, I know that STAR was, they were giving higher interest rate yields for anything one and a half million or less. And so we were definitely trying to make sure that anything over that threshold was in the STAR plus. I'm not sure where you're seeing a negative, Dan. It looks, he's saying the current month yield on STAR Ohio is .55. The current yield on STAR Ohio plus is .35.
Yeah, it's nice. And it's been less for a long time.
But we're not going to get, well, it wasn't. I think this is, this is probably since COVID, I'd have to look at the records to be sure. The, but again, that anything, as you can see, the total amount in STAR Ohio is 1.3 versus the, there's two point, almost 2.5 in STAR Ohio plus. So we're still going to continue to try to get that. But I can certainly talk to Will about making sure that we're managing the two funds as we can.
They're both so close to zero.
Right, we're getting back to 2009, 2010, 2011 levels.
Like they've been there before.
Unfortunately.
Jamie, to confirm what you're saying, the drop in the interest rate is absolutely tied to COVID. I mean, you could see, if you look at previous financial statements, you can see the decline. It's, it's clear. Just one argument in favor of staying in both, perhaps not to the degree that we are, but diversification is a good idea. You don't want all your eggs in one basket. So I would, I would not recommend completely removing ourselves from STAR plus. It's an available investment that we, that we have few investments that we can choose as a public library. And so I would at least keep some for diversification reasons.
Yeah, there's not a big difference between the two, but if I'm reading the second STAR, the second bullet correctly, it's the STAR Ohio plus that has the maximum before the rate goes down and that's the lower rate. Why would we even push the maximum? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think it's worth bringing up to Will discussing at our next meeting.
Right, and, okay, so he, yes, and so his first two bullets do, do mention that and, and do also mention that he will continue to monitor it to make sure that we get the fund, the maximum fund that we're supposed to have. And we have roughly, basically, those two accounts are basically the operating account, operating money. So that money would be transferred into the various accounts with US Bank as needed. So this isn't a case where we want to necessarily throw additional money into fifth third because the fifth third stuff is not as liquid as well.
All right, so Jamie, will you have a chance to follow up with Will?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dan. Good point. All right, any other questions from the financial statements? If not, may I have a motion to approve the June 2020 financial statements?
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill. A second?
This is Jenny, I'll second.
Thank you, Jenny. Roll call, please, Trent.
Yes. Ms. Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yeah.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Sony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Jamie, before we move on to the gift report, did you want to go over the PO succeeding $5,000?
I can, yes. They, I think Will notated them in his report, but they, there were three POs over $5,000. Biblioteca was just under 10. Recall our conversations around this. It was that we actually used the $10,000 of going to the board. Hold on a second, somebody.
There's a lot of feedback. It just started.
Yeah, if everyone can mute. Okay, and so they, they came in under that $10,000 to make sure that, so we use that as a bargaining chip. They lowered their rate. That is the support renewal, the annual renewal for Biblioteca. The CDW quote or amount is also under 10, but that is for, primarily for work-from-home equipment for various staff members. I believe we ordered nine or 10 Surface Pros so that staff could work from home, as well as a few other peripherals for that. And then Holland Paving is the parking lot striping. They're going to seal the lot, they're going to, and then stripe the lot. And they're actually going to bring us back to the level, I think we, the last time, when, last year, when we repaved the lot, if you remember, we put roughly one to one and a half inches on top of the asphalt. When they did the striping for that, we did lose some stalls. So they're going to black the current striping out and they'll re-stripe according to the levels we were at before. So, and they came in at the lowest pricing there. We did, I did make sure that Greg reached out to Precision Paving, who had recently just done the middle school lot. I think that they do the schools. And again, Holland came in under them, so we went with them.
What did you mean when you said you used the $10,000 as a bargaining chip with Biblioteca?
So Biblioteca's quote, I think, was like 10.5 and with the board requiring anything to come to, any POs over 10,000, 10,000 or more to come to the board. So I had Peter reach out to Biblioteca and let them know that there was a $10,000 threshold and we could potentially move on that without board approval if they brought it in under 10. Also then, that was, that was able to get us ability to approve that contract without, in a timely fashion before our other contract ran out. So just as we can sometimes use the public building threshold, public bidding threshold with some vendors, anytime that we're able to kind of use some of these things to our advantage. And, you know, clearly they knocked, they knocked around $600 or so off. I believe that was right. Is that correct, Peter?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the original quote right now. Yeah, that's the new one. It was about 600.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the gift report. Again, we're in zeros for our gifts, but we do generate the report. So we would like to have a motion to approve that June 2020 gift report. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. A second?
A second, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Roll call, please, Trent.
Ms. Benarski?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Abstain.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I saw Trent looking around. He can't see my face because my camera's not working, so.
All right, we're, are we good, Trent? Was that all you needed?
Yes, I got all, all responses now.
Thank you, I'm sorry. All right, Jamie, let's go ahead and talk about the approval of the health insurance provider and everything that is going on with that.
Okay, so there's quite a bit going on with this. As Melissa mentioned, we did spend quite a bit of the finance committee talking with Becky Ash, who is our broker at Stats and Associates. Becky has worked with us for, I think, roughly four to five years as far as doing our, our health insurance, taking it to market, marketing it and negotiating it. Currently, we are with Aetna and I do not actually have a, an ask for the board tonight for an approval. At the finance committee meeting, we were waiting on Anthem to provide a hopefully competitive quote. And since then, Anthem has waited till the last minute and they then decided to decline to quote. So Becky is reaching out to their management to ask them why it took so long for them to decline to quote and to make sure that they understand that we're, once again, not happy with Anthem. So what we're actually left with is just a, the initial proposal that we got was a 30% increase from Aetna and with our current plans. We also, they did say that they have a new plan structure that would increase deductibles as well as out-of-pocket expenses for employees. That was a 13% increase. And at the time of the finance committee meeting, we had a quote from Sumacare. We were waiting on Sumacare to give us additional information on their premier network, which would include the Cleveland Clinic. And we have about one-third of our employees that use the clinic as their preferred healthcare system. We did provide a survey to the staff to ask them simply whether they use Metro Health, Mercy, UH, or the clinic, or any other system as their, their primary facilities. We got those numbers back and it's roughly split, one-third between Metro Health, UH, and Cleveland Clinic, just for your information. Like I said, there's a lot here. So then, so Sumacare had initially quoted a plan-for-plan structure based on our current plan and rate structure with Aetna. And that was a, I believe that was a 6% increase.
Might have been nine.
Nine percent. That sounds better, thank you. Since that initial quote and when we were waiting for the premier network quote, they reached out and actually said that they were basing those plan increases off of the 13% increase from Aetna. So it was not a plan-for-plan platform basis. And that took Sumacare out of the mix. And so they weren't, also not competitive. So at this point, where we stand today is we have a 30% increase on our current plans with Aetna. Becky, I talked to Becky earlier today and she is reaching out to Aetna to try to see what we can do. At that point, I did also let Becky know about the Stark County, Stark County Council of Governments, that consortium that we could join and we shared those plans with her. So she is potentially able to use that as a bargaining chip with Aetna. So we are still able to try to reach out with Aetna to, to get some rate relief, which Becky has seen in the past that with rate relief, there's anywhere from a 5% to 10% rate reduction. And that would include across all plans. So if we kept the current plans where we were at and we got a rate reduction from Aetna, we, that would reduce the 30%, for instance, to anywhere from 20% to 25%. And that also then would take their new platform plans, if we chose to go with them and redesign our, our plans. It would take that from a 13 to an eight or a 3% reduction, or I'm sorry, increase over our current plan. At, so we're, we're in a holding pattern still. Our renewal is actually September 1st. We do have a little bit of time with this. Now that we're only dealing with Aetna, Becky feels that we can probably get additional numbers from them, hopefully by the end of the week, in which case we'll probably have to schedule another meeting for the board to evaluate the numbers, to evaluate the plans and to approve what we do going forward. There's a couple other things in the mix with this. Becky mentioned that, and I'm not familiar, this is the first I'm hearing of this. She mentioned that we could have some rate relief with an HRA. And Jill, I know you have experience with insurance in general and you may be able to speak to some of this. But the way that I understand it, you, you could build your plan, your platform around a higher deductible plan. And then you also put money into the HRA and it kind of works as a secondary insurance. And so the high utilizers of the plan would still get some relief in that way. Obviously, I will have Becky in on the next call. She could not make it tonight and we really didn't have many numbers. We, there wasn't necessarily a decision for the board to make tonight anyway, so it's not that big of a deal that she's not on the call. So we, we have, we have a couple of things going on right now. We're waiting for potential rate relief from Aetna. We're possibly evaluating adding in the HRA to help with expenses, premium expenses for both the library and staff moving forward. And we have the, the Stark County Council of Governments, but that would include a much larger discussion because they only have single or family coverage. And we have about, we have about five, I think it's five to eight members that are, that they insure their spouse in addition to themselves, or they insure children in addition to themselves. So currently with Aetna, there's like that middle, so there's, there's single coverage, there's single plus spouse, single plus children, and then there's family coverage. Jumping at the current rate of reimbursement that we have, jumping to the Council of Governments would mean that all of those people in, that have spouse or children only would have to move to the family and that would not necessarily be budget-friendly. As well as those that would have to move to, even that currently have family and would have to move to family would not necessarily be budget-friendly either. So that would require possibly redesigning our reimbursement of what we're doing with healthcare. So that's a different discussion we have. And then I was also in discussion with Jill after the finance committee meeting. Jill suggested that we, not this year, because there would be a lot of education in the mix, but that we try to move for, we try to plan for next year to introduce some HSA, which is the Health Savings Accounts. And, but that would take about a six-month education process. So six months from now, we, we would begin some of those discussions with Becky and those discussions with the staff to possibly offer some HSA. So for this next year, we're really looking at, again, looking at Aetna, what kind of relief we can possibly get with the rates and then whether we wanted to include the HRA component. Jill, do you have any experience with HRA?
I do have some experience with that and if we go down the path of an HRA, I would say just do one change, hold it for a couple of years, if we can, you know, financially if we can. That's a lot of, it's a way to, it really, the HRA is a way to offset the deductible where we, as the employer, would set aside some amount of funding and the rules behind how much of a deductible we fund and any amount that isn't used still with the library versus an HSA. The employee can contribute, the employer, the employer can contribute. Any unused portions of those funds in a year stays with the employee. So there's some different things we can look at and education, but both are options and levers to pull of ways to reduce the cost, but I think also helping, really helping employees prepare for saving for healthcare long-term. I think that's something to be looking at is what the strategy to help them long-term in this evolving world and where the healthcare plan deductibles are right now. What are some options forward?
And I did share a document, Becky shared a document with me as far as what the actual claims usage was. It does not include any actual employee data, but does talk about some of the various medical issues that staff have. And basically, Aetna is saying that our premiums are not, they're, they're operating at 100% loss. And I know there was a little bit of skepticism as far as whether that was actually true. In discussion, seeing that document that Becky provided, as well as discussions with Sheri, we do believe that that is not a false statement. I know that there is at least one, one procedure potentially that exceeded the entire amount premiums that we pay. And just to give you a little bit of other perspective, we pay about, we budgeted around $300,000 for premiums for medical and we did also budget for a 25% increase and a 25% increase for just the, the last portion of the year. So if we can get under that amount, at, at least. Um, so if we can, uh, get under that, um, amount, um, a- at least where, where budget neutral as far as this year. So I realize that thirty percent sounds like a huge increase, um, and it all also depends on where that increase falls. Sometimes, for instance, single coverage may get, um, a little bit higher, um, based on when they, they actually give the, uh, what the actual rates are, the premiums. Uh, sometimes you, family may have a reduction, or sometimes, uh, employee plus spouse might be a little higher as far as percentage-wise. Um, it's not necessarily across the board that everybody is, uh, incurring that thirty percent.
I, I think that's a really great point. I know that the thirty percent initially, um, you know, it's a big number, you just can't get around that. But everyone, we need to keep in mind that we did budget for twenty-five percent increase, not that we want to go there, and not that that's a green light or anything, but we did budget for that, and we are talking just till the end of this budget year, right? So just until the end of this calendar year, in between that time, Jamie and Trent will work those numbers into next year's budget as well by trimming in different areas and, you know, sharpening their pencils, like our dear Pat used to say, and, you know, getting those numbers, uh, equalized. So I think that is an important thing to remember. And also, Jamie, could you just calculate out the actual dollar figure that we're talking about here with that maximum risk there for us?
Um, there's seventy-five hundred set aside for that. Um, but the, um, so it, again, like I said, it, it isn't actually, um, it isn't necessarily thirty percent of the, um, when they say there's a thirty percent increase, that doesn't mean that there's thirty percent of the three hundred thousand, um, because there is that employee versus, um, library share. Um, and then, um, also, when, when it gets to budgeting, whatever the, whatever the rate is, we calculate what the actual cost to the library will be. That becomes a fixed cost for the library. So that's one of the starting points when we get into the budget process, is, um, we know what this cost is, so we put that in, and then we work around some of those fixed costs as far as some of the other projects and, and the way that the budget falls out.
Right, right. Okay, so, uh, our next-
Dan, Dan has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Yeah, it seems like it's good to be part of a bigger group, and so joining that Stark Consortium to me sounds like a good idea. How long does it take to get onboard with them? And do we have pros and cons for what it's really going to look like? I mean, we may have to put more money in as, on the library side, but maybe it's worth it.
So we're, yes, we're working on the numbers for that as well, Dan. Um, and, uh, talking to Becky, uh, mentioning that today, um, the medical portion of that plan is a two fifty, five hundred deductible, so two hundred and fifty dollars single, five hundred dollars family, with a max one thousand dollars out of pocket. It's a very, very rich plan with Medical Mutual. Um, the, we do have the cost for, as I said, we have the cost for what it would cost for single as well as family, and, um, but the, the biggest sticking point initially is, um, the, the five to eight people that are in the middle of our plans, uh, would, would get hit. So for instance, um, I pay three hundred and fifty dollars a pay for, um, Sarah and I to be insured with Aetna. That three hundred and fifty per pay would jump to, um, about eight hundred a pay, um, just as our current plans are outlined. So, uh, for instance, uh, those other people that are, that are just single versus, um, family versus single plus spouse, single plus children, and though there's five to, um, five to eight people that are, that are directly affected there. So that's a big hit to, to paycheck. So it would potentially be a larger discussion with the board on whether we want to redesign, uh, the percentages that we pay. So currently, we pay, uh, eighty-five percent of single coverage, and then we pay, um, we, that's a fixed amount, and then the incremental cost beyond that for employees, whether they have spouse, or whether they have children, or whether they have family, we pay the, we pay forty percent of the remaining increase. So there would be, have to be a discussion with the board as far as whether we want to, um, fund a little more from there. Uh, it's not necessarily off the table. The other portion of that is you, once you join the COG, you're, it, um, you can't pick and choose, so you're using all of their services. So our, um, the life insurance that we use, the medical, or I'm sorry, the dental, as well as the vision, would also have to be, um, on their plan. So currently, we have Delta Dental, um, and it's a, um, just for dental, there's a pretty large increase on the dental side, so that would affect all employees. So we really have to look at the numbers. Um, I do have, uh, Sheri is actually on vacation, uh, for the next ten days, but I did, um, we are working on trying to get the calculation and what it would look like, um, for our current cost, as well as what it would look like for the employees' cost, and maybe where we would have to get to even make a recommendation to the board, uh, as far as what, uh, that percentage should be. They do have, they are far more budget-friendly. They generally have no more than a five percent increase, uh, year to year. Uh, that group is, is very, very large. Um, and, uh, currently, the other aspect of it is, um, they do offer some, uh, premium holidays. Generally, the last, uh, two years have been two to three premium holidays, which basically means there's two to three months where you, where nobody pays any premium. So that, in effect, lowers the overall cost of those premiums, but you're not able to participate in the holidays until you're completely vested. And in order to be completely vested, you basically, um, have to pay into the consortium the amount, the average amount of your past three years' claims history. And so having large claims history in our group, um, there, we would have to make that up. We don't necessarily have to pay that off, uh, right initially, although we could. Uh, generally, uh, you can just join the plan and not have the premium holidays, and so when you, when nobody else is paying in, you would pay in, and that helps to offset those, um, that, that, um, claim, that balance. Generally, the average is roughly three years. So we could participate for three years, we would have no claim, no premium holidays, and then after the three years, we could. Uh, if you don't pay it, um, by year five, you're automatically vested. So it would be a five-year max where, uh, potentially, we, we, um, would be able to, um, work on getting vested into that group. There's a lot. It, it, it's a lot, and it would take, um, additional discussions. Not saying that we are not willing to have it, um, or that we can't.
Any other questions? All right, so Jill, do you have anything to add? We really value your expertise in this area.
Oh, thank you. Um, no, Jamie and I have been talking, and I can catch up with you afterwards too, on what you get back from Becky, from the marketplace, if you'd like to talk anything through. And I just really, I really value what you're doing right now and making sure that we're, even though it's a, you know, we're looking at a large increase, but trying to minimize the amount of change that the, the team members at the library are going to experience. I think that's huge. It's already such a year of change that I think we have to be thoughtful about all that we're asking of the library team members, and health insurance is so personal. So I really appreciate how all of this is being weighed, and it's, it's difficult decisions of where the marketplace. Um, so looking forward to seeing what Becky brings back, but thank you for weighing all of that.
The other thing, um, I want to reassure everyone about is the timing for this. I know that, um, every year it feels like it's kind of a rushed decision, but that's kind of, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it does seem to be just the way, uh, the renewals work. They need, um, very recent data to work up the renewals, and they also kind of play on, you know, those last-minute decisions, decision-making by companies as well. So, um, I, it's not just us, we don't need to feel like, um, you know, this is, for some reason, we're not getting the data that we need. Uh, it really does seem to me, in my experience anyway, just to be very, um, kind of, just the way the, the whole industry kind of works with their renewals. Jill?
Very much for, for a group our size at the library, this is extremely typical, and they won't give much more lead time than sixty days, or they would consider anything invalid. So we really just have a very small window, and really, if things are decided in the next two weeks, we're still in great shape, everyone will get their insurance cards, and they'll be current as of the effective date on nine months. So really, these next two weeks are fine.
Very good.
Dan, did you, did you have an additional question?
No, just a, a comment. I think joining a larger consortium would give us a much more stable and budgetable future, and I'd be willing to pay more on the library side to keep the benefits where they're at, and, and the costs where they're at for the employees, just to have that stability.
So I think, and, uh, I think that is very much appreciated, and, uh, one of the things that we can do, because we're not necessarily locked in, uh, we can proceed with this, uh, renewal if we want, we can evaluate the information as we go. We can also then, um, turn our attention to having the discussions about what it would take to join, uh, the council of governments, what it potentially would look like if we had an HSA, for instance. Um, and we could jump over to that point, we could make the changes in our, um, our structure, our formulas, um, but again, we need that data first, and, and we are working, I'm working on it, and, um, we'll get it as quickly as we can so that we can have the informed decisions, um, but it's definitely appreciated, Dan.
Right, and I, I agree, Dan. It's time to explore more options, for sure. Um, so right now, we're waiting on that information on the rate reduction from Becky, and you will get in touch with us about scheduling a special meeting?
Yes, we'll, we'll get to you in a second, Melissa. We'll, um, we'll have to schedule a, a meeting, I would assume, in the next week or two. If, if we get the information the end of this week, uh, we could potentially, depending on schedules, uh, we could schedule it next week, um, if we want to look at, um, depending on, on what the numbers are and how we, uh, want to proceed. One other thing I wanted to mention was, we do have a September one renewal, and the fact that, uh, we're staying with Aetna, Aetna will allow, um, plan changes and additional, um, basically, they'll allow an open enrollment, um, through the end of September as well. So we're not only stuck to, um, the month of August for open enrollment. So that is another, um, plus as far as, um, work, what we're working with right now. Melissa?
My question was, is Becky at all able to negotiate with the Stark County plan? Or is that a plan where everything is transparent, and you, you just know what, what the numbers are going to be going into it? It seems like she's been able to, to be such a value to the library as a liaison and negotiator. I'm wondering, can she still do that with the Stark County plan, or what's your answer?
No, so, um, so Becky, when I mentioned the, um, Stark County Council of Governments today, she did mention that she would assist us in, in any way, uh, she could to make that transition to them. But once we're a member of that, uh, that group, they, uh, they actually have a superintendent that only negotiates and deals with, um, the, the plan premium. They do have a, uh, at least one other employee that kind of works as an intermediary. So if somebody had a claim, uh, a problem with a claim, or they had some questions, there is somebody that they can talk to that, uh, can work on their benefit, uh, on the Medical Mutual side. But the way that it was explained when we met with them, um, I think it was a year, it was two years ago, I believe, um, the superintendent, basically, they have a discussion with Medical Mutual, and the way that he said it with the size of their group, uh, that he walks into the room and kind of tells them what they're going to do or not do, uh, and, um, and they do it. Um, they could be completely fully funded, the, with the size of the group and the amount of money that they bring in, uh, but they do choose to have Medical Mutual as the, um, the plan administrator for their plan. Um, so we basically would not deal with Becky anymore once we went over to the Stark County Council of Governments, but they, um, they, they kind of have, um, those things in place already. And they'll tell, basically, they're on a fiscal, they're on a school year, fiscal year, so they're on the July to, um, June, uh, fiscal year, and I believe they'll give us, uh, they roughly, I, I think, three months ahead of time, you'll kind of know what the rates, the, the potential rate increase would be, as well as how many, uh, premium holidays there's going to be for the next year. Uh, and based on the fact that they're on the school year, we would have, uh, at least six months, um, to work those kind of figures into our budget and to let people know, uh, what's going on.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Jamie, anyone?
No.
All right, thank you. We'll wait to hear from you then. Okay. Moving on to the director's report. Jamie, you're gonna lose your voice tonight.
Yeah, talking head here. Uh, so we do, uh, as I mentioned in my report, I just want to kind of hit the bullet points, um, a little bit. Um, we do have the three policies that we included, and those are, uh, at least two of those are action points, so we'll get into that after, uh, this initial discussion, uh, and we'll specifically, uh, talk about those policies. Um, I, I did want to make sure that the board, uh, saw the strategic plan area in the board website, um, so Chanel did add the videos that our team is, uh, pushing out to the staff as we push those out, so that's kind of for your reference, maybe it's for your education as well, or a reminder, uh, as far as what we're doing. Um, the marketing team, uh, started us off with the first video. They also, uh, which Peter actually is on the marketing team, um, they, they, um, uh, suggested that we, uh, have cookies, so we did provide the staff, um, sugar cookies with, uh, the tagline on them, so each cookie either said discover, connect, or engage. So that kind of was a, a little bit of an extra, but also to try to help the staff, um, uh, get onboard with the tagline. Uh, we'll, we'll have, um, new banners in the parking lot soon, which will kind of do that soft launch of the new, um, logo. Um, and, um, as I said, you can, you can see the videos as, as they go. We're actually set to release our third video, uh, next Wednesday. So it's basically every other Wednesday, a new video is coming out for the staff, and then we will work on, uh, getting information out to the public. We're not quite sure how, um, completely yet how we'll do that, and we'll probably involve the marketing team a little bit, uh, with that as well. So it's a good, it's a good instance where, um, our teams are working well, and they're also working well together, um, so that, you know, marketing team kind of comes up with some plans, and they push that over to strategic planning team. Uh, we can discuss some of those, and we can move forward with those as well. The, um, we're currently at the technology update for the meeting rooms. After some discussion with Melissa and Cindy over the initial proposal, uh, I did reach out to, Cindy, do you have a question now? Go ahead. Yes. That was, you, are you talking about Ingrid? That was Peter's child. That was Peter's child. Those are just for the staff at this point. Okay. Thank you. So back to the meeting room, uh, technology update, update. So, um, Melissa was a little concerned with, um, the, that we may have to bid the project, publicly bid the project. And so I reached out to, um, normally I would reach out to Sylvia Gillis at Bricker and Eckler. But unfortunately I found out that she passed away in, uh, May unexpectedly. So I did have a little bit of an additional delay trying to get ahold of somebody else at the firm.
We're all sorry to hear that. That's so shocking.
Yeah, it, it was. Kind of one more thing that you just keep adding to the list. So I did get it ahold of Laura Bowman. Uh, I believe that's how you pronounce her last name. She is another partner at the firm. And she got back to me today that, uh, they believe, and they will provide a letter to this effect, which will work for audit, the auditors, um, that we do not have to publicly bid it. And Melissa, um, I, I think your concerns were definitely valid. And this was a learning experience in the fact that, uh, previously to my knowledge, technology did not, um, have to be bid. But the understanding with the language that is in ORC is when you're making improvements to the building. And so generally if we were to purchase seventy thousand dollars worth of computers, for instance, we're not actually making improvements to the building. We're just putting, um, these computers in the building. So that's where generally technology would not be included. Melissa's specific concern was that because we are attaching things to the building, like the projecters, that potentially that would become a fixture or an improvement. In, um, the discussion I had with Laura, there's a couple of things working with, in our favor with this. One is we're not using tax dollars for the project because the money is coming directly from, uh, the foundation as well as the women's committee. Although if, if the foundation, for instance, had, uh, funded the entire project and the foundation, uh, which we've done in the past, where we could just submit the invoices directly to the foundation and they paid them, it would be a lot easier. But we had already received the twenty thousand dollar check from the women's committee. And so not having to re, um, make a refund to the women's committee and then turn around and have them do checks to, directly to, um, uh, the company. But we can definitely track the fact that we, we have, we received restricted or will receive restricted funds and that those funds will be, um, for that amount, um, paid for on this project. The other thing was that because they determined that they were simply installing the technology and that they, because they weren't doing anything with drywall, uh, they weren't moving walls, that, um, that they would, um, get around, that it was not an actual improvement to the building. So, um, good to do the double check. I think the other learning, uh, aspect of this is anytime that we get close to the fifty thousand dollar mark, just to send an email and to make sure, um, with, uh, Bricker and Eckler. And, um, just so you understand, normally we, we deal with, a lot of times you'll hear, um, Jim Wilkins. That is generally labor law. That is the counsel we use for labor law. To this point, we've used Bricker and Eckler for, um, any of the, they've helped us with the public bids or they, they kind of do, um, the, the, the law around, um, this type of, of improvements or, um, anything like that. And then so the other aspect, uh, with this is they are going to help us draft a contract. And once I get that first draft, I will pass that through with Melissa and Cindy just to make sure that your questions and your concerns were covered. And then I'll turn that over to Bluestone, uh, so that they can, um, um, hopefully sign it. Maybe there's some back and forth a little bit with that, but, um, we'll get an actual contract to protect both sides with this project. And I think that the, the, the concern was the fact that this is, uh, roughly a seventy thousand dollar project. And we potentially needed to have some additional precautions and safety, um, built into protect the library in our interest with this. Does that kind of sum that up well, Melissa?
Yeah, I think, I think when you have a, a big project, and, and that can be a much lot lower dollar number, but, um, you, you want some basic contract provisions. I think what they presented to us is more of a proposal, but doesn't really have any, just sort of basic contract law provisions, uh, that, that really do protect the library. And, um, I'm, I think it's wise that we've engaged council to help us with that. Because if something goes wrong, it's, it's money well spent.
Did you have anything to add, Cindy? Okay. Any questions about the, that project or, um, the process that we're doing right now?
Melissa and Cindy, I appreciate your expertise in this area. Thank you so much. It was very valuable.
The final thing I mentioned from my report before we get into, um, the other business and the, the, the policy approvals is, um, just to make sure that the board saw the, um, the renewals for directors and officers, um, from Cincinnati. That was, um, we renewed that. And a little bit of that discussion is, uh, that is, the, both of those documents are, are on the board's side as well. And it's something that the board should, uh, potentially review here and there, as well as, uh, I need to make a point to review and be in contact with, uh, Paul Benardi, uh, becau, at Pinkerton, uh, because there's things in there. So for instance, uh, one of the things I mentioned to the finance committee, if unfortunately something were to happen to me, uh, if I were to get hit by a car or if I were to, uh, to die, there are coverages, for instance, in what it would take, um, for the board to replace me in my position. So there are additional coverages that we may not be aware of. And it's good to know, uh, what those things are and, and that they're included. So, um, I think another one that was pointed out potentially was, um, loss of revenue from canceling, uh, an event cancellation, for instance. So if we were to have a major author that was scheduled to come in and, um, they had to cancel, some of those expenses from canceling an event might be covered as well. So again, this is something where, uh, i- if we get into a situation where we're spending, um, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on something, it's worth it to send that email or to have a call to Paul to make sure that maybe something is or isn't covered and, um, and, and what are the ramifications of doing that? So, uh, and that's really the, the point of dealing with the broker is, um, you know, that's really his job. Not only to shop it for us, but also to, to be in consultation to say, yeah, this might be covered or this might not be, or we can at least try it and submit it, uh, and go from there. So, um, just wanted to make sure that the board knew that those documents are updated on the board's side as well.
Very good.
So then moving into our policies, the first one is the harassment and discrimination policy. And this came about after, um, Title VII was updated at the federal level to include, um, uh, to expand upon, uh, what sexual discrimination means. So we ran our current policy by Wilkins, uh, Jim Wilkins. And, um, the version that you see for approval, uh, is what the suggested edits that they, uh, suggested that we have. And so once this is approved by the board, the personnel manual will be updated and all staff will be, um, notified of that change, as well as have to, uh, sign off that they received the updated manual with the updated change.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Questions? Yeah. Questions or comments, anyone? All right. If not, may I have a motion to approve the revised harassment and discrimination policy, please?
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill. May I have a second?
Dave will start it.
Thank you, Dave. Roll call, please, Trent.
Unmute.
You're muted.
I thought I had done that. I apologize. Ms. Benarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer? Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, Jamie, the COVID nineteen pandemic policy?
Yeah, so the, uh, the second policy is the COVID nineteen pandemic policy. And, uh, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. At the last meeting, we did approve the face coverings policy. We decided that we would put that, uh, text in this policy as well. And, um, the additional, um, meat of this policy is basically our guidelines, uh, for the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, which is, uh, basically at level four, uh, we would not allow public in the building. We would, uh, go back to, uh, remote services and curbside pickup only. At levels one through three, we would be open for thirty minute browsing, limited computer access and in library service. And I'll say, um, some of the, the stuff, we'll also talk, um, beyond this. But some of the things in this policy are in there so that we have a little bit of, um, backing, um, muscle if needed. But for instance, the thirty minute browsing, we're, we're saying that because that's our suggestion. We're trying to make sure that the public understands that we really want them to, um, to come in. We're, we're allowing them to come in, um, but kind of, um, look around, get the items that you need. And, uh, and then, um, and then go. But we're not going to police this. We're not going to time anyone when they walk in the door. We're not going to say to anyone that they've been here for thirty-five minutes, et cetera. But just kind of trying to make sure that, that, um, they understand that, you know, that currently at this point, we're, we're, they're not able to necessarily lounge, um, or be the, be here for, um, lengths of time. It's unfortunate, but that's just where we are right now. We have removed most of the, um, furniture from the building. We've removed a lot of the display stands. One, so that we can open, uh, open the floors up and allow for social distancing as needed. We'll also have a, um, fifty, I believe our occupancy is set at fifty-six patrons at a time. That will be, um, counted at the greeters desk. And again, um, if we reach the fifty-six capacity, that would be, we would start a queue outside at the main entrance. We have decided to keep the current entrance as an entrance and an exit. The fact that we all have face coverings, the fact that, um, most stores that you go in, you don't necessarily have, um, a separate entrance exit anymore. I, I do, you know, maybe Walmart does, but they're, they're huge. But in, in a lot of stores, people are used to navigating, seeing potentially that somebody's in and, um, deferring to a patron either exiting or entering. And that was reached with, uh, consultation from the Rocky River, uh, Fire Marshal, Trent spoke to him. And rather than having, uh, specific numbers in specific areas of the building, we kind of calculated up what that would be and, uh, came up with that, uh, that number based on, on, um, on that. But there, there are other recommendations. So for instance, in, um, like in the teen area, uh, that there might, it might only accommodate five. And so if we, if we saw that there was an issue there, we could, uh, potentially then say, you know, I'm sorry, you know, there's seven of you browsing right now. Could one of you just step out or wait? And that's just an instance of you can't really maintain that six foot distance. And then, um, one of the things that we might have for, um, discussion is the patrons under fifteen. And again, this is something where, um, we believe that, and this is, we're not the only library to do this. But it's a, it's a, um, we're not going to card everyone that comes in. We're not going to wait at the front door. But it's again, an issue where, you know, potentially if there are, uh, a couple of ten-year-olds that are, um, running around or maybe doing things that they're not supposed to, if they're not observing, um, the guidelines that we have in place, that we can't ask them to leave and suggest that they bring a parent back with them. We also want to make sure that they're, um, properly wearing masks, et cetera. And we can't necessarily, um, um, be around everywhere to, to monitor that. So that's kind of the biggest, um, that's really the meat of the policy. Are there any, is there any conversation around that or any concerns? Dan?
The patrons under fifteen, are the lawyers okay with that?
So I would say that the tricky thing with the, that policy is going to be, on the one hand, you're talking about high school students. There are freshmen who are not yet fifteen. And, um, I think it's just really wise to, we have such a good relationship with the middle school right now, just to make it very clear to the middle school before school starts, that, that is the policy. Because I know a lot of middle school students in the past, pre-pandemic, would go to the library and would, would be picked up from the library. And that's obviously not something that's going to be a possibility at this time because there are no chairs or desks or lingering. I think, I think it'll be interesting to see how, I don't think there's any legal problems with that. But I think that you're, you're going to get some pushback from the community. And so I think it's just important to understand what our thinking is. And I, I think Jamie, you said, we have seen other libraries choose this particular age. And so you've been guided by what other libraries have done. And you do have some fifteen-year-old middle schoolers, possibly, potentially, eighth graders who turned fifteen. So I think you're, I think you have a good rationale if he, if people understand that geographically we're located right next to a school. And historically, our school has been used as a place where middle schoolers gather. Which we want in normal times.
Right. And, and, um, that, that is certainly, uh, something that we have considered. This is something that we've somewhat gone back and forth with. I think part of this is just trying to make sure that everybody abides by the rules. And that we're, we're able to, to ensure that. The other aspect is, um, that I certainly would reach out and I've waited until we, depending on what we do with this policy, um, after the board meeting, um, in the next couple of weeks, I definitely will be reaching out to the schools, not only to let them know what's going on here, but also just to find out what we can or cannot do, uh, to support them in, uh, some of the decisions that they're making. And I know, as you said, um, their school board meeting is at the same time. So we're not sure quite, uh, what their guidelines and restrictions are. So.
I think, I think there's some room for some creativity where, as opposed to bringing the students to the library during the school day, remember that we had sixth grade teachers who would bring their entire class, that the librarians can go to the school. I think there's still ways to have a partnership, but it's going to be new and different, like everything else. So I think, you know, our excellent teen librarians, I'm sure will find ways to continue the partnership that we have with the middle school, but it'll look different.
Jenny?
Hi, I have a question. It's a very much along these lines. But there, I know that the Ohio Educators Association yesterday released a recommendation that all schools remain remote when we're in red or purple. And I know that we, at the beginning, our opening schedule was tied to the schools. That was kind of like, we're going to close because we're kind of following their footsteps. Are we going to respond in a similar way? Or is this our plan kind of regardless of what the schools do? I'm just kind of wondering if there's any, any connection at any point now.
So my, no, I think that, um, that's why we're, we're outlining kind of with, with the new Ohio Public Health Advisory System. So just kind of making sure that we're outlining what we're going to do based on what our county is and the levels of our county. So I think that that is the stance there. Initially, not knowing what, uh, what was going to happen with the fact that they had decided to close the schools because they, the level of potential contagion. And knowing that if the schools were closed at that point, that a majority of those kids potentially would be at the library. And we would be defeating the purpose. And we would be defeating the purpose of them closing the schools, but then allowing them to congregate at the library. So it was a different point in time, a different decision process. And I think that as we've navigated the pandemic over the summer, that we can safely be open with the schools not necessarily in session or whether they're virtual only. But again, I do think that we need to reach out and try to figure out what we can or can't do. One of the things that may, may not necessarily sit well with some is the tutors. But at the same time, the tutors are, many of the tutors are for-profit, and we're not necessarily in business to help others stay in business in that sense. So without being able to congregate, I don't know that tutors and students, they're not going to be able to meet at the library. But I think that there's other things that we can do specifically to support the schools or to support the students. And so for instance, when the schools initially shut down, they borrowed five of our Wi-Fi hotspots because that's all that we were able to gather for them at that time and gave those to some students that didn't have internet access. So I see that that could be something that we do moving forward as far as we were, I talked to Peter today, and we're up over, I think, 60 devices at this point. So, and with money coming in from the state as well as various other grants that we're trying to get, we potentially could still put some of those devices into students' hands. We did expand our Wi-Fi to the entire grounds to make sure that the entire property is covered with Wi-Fi. So there is that aspect as well, where a student could use a device in the reading garden, for instance, and not necessarily be inside the building. So there are some things like that as well. Is that?
Yeah, definitely. I'm sure that you know, you have already been through this, but I, and see that these kind of, especially the masks, the 30-minute time limit and the, not time limit, but the 30-minute browsing, and then not under 15, will be, might need to be more firmly enforced if school is not in session at all versus if it's not. So we'll see, I guess. Thank you.
Dan?
I have to unmute. On the face coverings, it seems a little restrictive. I think the Ohio rule lets you take your mask off if you're alone in your office. And our policy doesn't really seem to let you do that.
Well, the policy is, we do allow, so if I'm in my office, obviously, I'm not wearing a mask now. That is internal for the staff. They are allowed to take the mask off. That's more of an internal thing that was not included in this. Again, we passed the face coverings, basically trying to mandate that all who enter the building have a face mask on. And so we put that language that we passed last month into this policy.
Yeah, it's just the wording's pretty bad because it says "all staff at all times inside the library."
Well, I think, again, you can, you know, you use the policies as needed. But we can, we certainly could change it. We could, we could take staff out of this, but I don't think that we'd want to do that. And we really don't want the patrons to take the mask off at all, really. So, you know, whether we allow somebody who's in their office to take a mask off and we tell them as an informal procedure that they're allowed to do that.
Well, yes, some wording.
Spell that out.
That says, you know, "in accordance with the state order." Because the state order's a little less restrictive than our policy there. Now we're saying, hey, you got to have it on all the time.
I think that's in there. It's the last sentence of face coverings.
Okay. Yeah, that, I guess that does it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have additional comments, Melissa?
Nope.
The 56 seems like a lot of people. Is that based on six feet or 20 feet? Or how did you figure that number?
Trent, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
I thought it was a low number, Dan. So it's interesting that you think it's a lot.
It really depends on how you use the library. So, I mean, honestly, it is probably closer to a tenth of what the actual fire code is for the building as opposed to 50%. The process was that Greg and I walked around with the fire prevention specialist from the fire department, and we described how the room was used. And we calculated the actual limit building code says that could be in there. And then based on how it's used and how we were anticipating using it, he gave us a suggestion that we went with. For, let's pick the grand reading room. At that time, you have to count everything in it. So it's actually larger now with less stuff in it. So we could allow more people. But he gave us a number based on the actual square footage. And we're like, this is how we plan to use it. We need six feet. And he's looking around and he came up with, like, you know, if you have one there, one there, one there, nine. Nine is what you got. And so it wasn't, we did the scientific measurement of the building code, and then it was a conversation between us as to how we're actually going to use it. And a, like, yep, he says you're only going to get like this many people in there based on that six feet. And it was, so it's actually a little, quite a bit lower than 50%.
I'm just worried that people tend to push things. And from what I've seen out there, the numbers are getting exceeded in a lot of places, a lot of bars and restaurants and things. And the same thing could happen at the library.
We will be counting at the greeters' desk.
Right. And we will, you know, as we get into this week by week, this is obviously the first time that we're allowing patrons back in. So it'll be an interesting approach. Also, remember that generally, six of those 56 are probably going to be in the computer center at the workstations down there. So that potentially lowers it to a little bit as far as people milling about. And if we, if we need to adjust it, then we will, I guess, do that as, you know, we'll bring it back and say it didn't work. But I think that we'll be okay as far, and I think that the enforcement of the numbers is an establishment issue versus, you know, yes, people may push it, but if we get to 56 as the 56th person walks in, then, you know, to make sure that we start queuing patrons. So we'll have almost an extra person in the lobby at the greeters' desk because there'll be someone that will have to assist the greeter. Initially, that will be Trent and I, you know, to help greet people as they come in, but also to make sure that we enforce those issues and that people understand what's going on. Trent has had probably half a dozen or more conversations with patrons at this point as far as face covering. So people are still not necessarily, and at this point, you know, we have a face covering policy of our own. It's a governor mandate. So we're not even mentioning our own policy, just the fact that it's a state mandate and that we're following the rules that we're doing. So a lot of this is just kind of backing up what the rules are out there and how we're going to respond to those internally.
Just one last question before I give up. Did your conversation with the fire marshal include the number of staff that would be in the building?
Those conversation, that conversation, we were excluding the staff.
So how many staff?
Specifically patron.
Yeah.
Let me rephrase that. It was specifically staff that are normally work, normally stationed within that workspace.
Okay.
So it's not 56 total people. It's literally 56. It's 56 in addition to our staff that are in the building. And that does not necessarily mean that all the staff are on floor either. We have the various workstations that are presented. The periodicals room, for instance, right now is an off-floor work area for CIRC. We have adult patron, staff that are maybe off-floor, technical services, obviously, and admin. We're not on the floor, et cetera. So it's in addition to our staff. Cindy?
Yeah, real quick, I don't remember seeing this typo in the face mask policy. It is for Centers for Disease Control.
Oh, for, under where we have face coverings? I think we only mentioned them once and then we refer to them as CDC. So it's the Centers for Disease Control?
Correct, it's Centers for Disease Control. I think that's right. Everything else you report through CDC.
We will, we will verify that and make sure that, before it's published, that it will be correct. I think you're right, actually, now that I hear it.
We, the one on the webpage is corrected. It was pointed out to us just after the board meeting. So I must have pasted in from the wrong document. But the one on the website for face coverings should actually be corrected.
Dave?
Yeah, two quick questions. Number one, will the basic rules be posted? Or are you just expecting people to go on the website and learn about the rules? And then I'll ask both questions. You can talk about it. And then if there's a, if there becomes an issue with the number of people in the library and getting some fussiness about people, you know, trying to get in and can't get in, might there be some technology that would be connected with a counter where you can actually put maximum occupancy 56 over the door and have the number visible of how many people are in the library just for a communication point of view? One thing it does, it shows, yes, we're really counting because I know people always wonder, okay, how do they know there are 56 people in here? But if you would have some kind of technology working with the counter and actually have a counter there, and I'm not saying to do this upfront, I'm just saying if we wind up getting fussiness about this, that might be able to help the situation.
That's a good point, and we certainly can look into that. And I'm sure Peter took notes on looking into what could be done for that type of thing as we go.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking right at Peter when he didn't know that I was talking.
And.
That's a great idea.
As far as your first question, we definitely will be marketing this. We will be in touch with Chanel. She's obviously aware of it. We wanted to make sure that the board passed the policy or any type of discussions the board had before we put too much out with this because I did not want to appear to be in opposition to the board in any way. So once this is passed, we'll make sure that it is posted. And yes, we will definitely have ample signage at the front door or in places where we need to for the public so that they know that they should wear their proper mask or to wear their masks properly as well as what our numbers are, as well as any other pertinent information that we need to do with this. So yes.
Yeah. And the Reader's Digest version, you know?
Yes, I'm not, I don't expect people to check the website necessarily before they come to the library. So we'll make sure. And I know some people are already, they already know that August 3 date and are maybe jumping at the bit to come. So the other aspect of this is to make sure that people understand that when they do come, this is not the library that they left in on March 15. And Jenny, you know, I know that you mentioned as well that your children love the library and can't wait to come to the library. But, you know, the train table is not there. The, you know, a lot of the manipulatives are not there just for a contagion aspect, having to clean those types of things. They certainly will be able to look at books. They certainly will be able to talk to the librarians. But some of the experience for the library is not going to be necessarily what they lack. And that will also be conveyed. And we have had a couple staff that have tried to make that as well, make that known.
I think Melissa had a question.
I know I've looked at this policy before, but I just noticed something else. For the level one through three under the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, would it be prudent for us to also include curbside pickup available? Because I think, I think you did say that curbside wouldn't disappear. Or am I wrong about that? For in level one through three?
The curbside, we are not anticipating curbside to disappear. We certainly are going to continue curbside for the time being. I don't know if, at what point, we may or may not open the drive-through. There is a little bit of a sticking point because we would like all patrons to drop their items at the outside external book drop. So we certainly can add it. I don't know that it will be something that we do the entire time. The other aspect of that is, you know, that there's something where we can say, at all times, you know, masks will be required, curbside will be available. But when we get to these other levels, these are some of the restrictions as well. It may come a time where we actually get to a level one and we decide, oh, well, we might be able to add this service at a level one, too. So I think that's kind of the, there's somewhat of a subject to change type of language as well. It's, you know, trying to, trying to put a policy in place during these times to cover all your bases, but then also be able to adapt and change. You know, the governor could also come out with a mandate tomorrow, and we have to further restrict something. So that's the hard part of all of this.
Okay. So you don't necessarily need to add the language. I guess I was asking in part because I have really enjoyed the curbside when we've used it. And I think maybe some of our, some other patrons, older, younger, I think they've also enjoyed it. So I was just wondering if it would still exist in level one to three. And it sounds like that's flexible, probably, yes, depending, not quite sure. But we don't want to codify, and I understand.
Yeah, it's definitely, at this point, we are intending to continue to do it, and we will have 10 spots specifically marked along the fence because if people are using the building, it'll be a little harder for, you know, to distinguish those spots. So we will have additional signage to try to make sure that those spots are reserved for curbside. But beyond that, you know, eventually, I think, I think maybe some people would rather use the drive-through, but our traffic patterns don't necessarily allow for everything right now. So that is definitely the plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay, if not, including the correction for the Centers for Disease Control, may I have a motion to approve the COVID-19 pandemic policy as corrected?
I'll move it, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. I will second. Trent, may I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Benarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Sensoni?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Trent. All right, we'll move on to the personnel report for July 2020. Jamie?
Well, before we do the personnel report, just to make mention that we did include a third policy in this packet, and that really is for the board to be able to see that. That was a response to a, I believe it was a February request. That was a response to a, I believe it was a February request, um, that, uh, we put a little language, uh, as far as the appeals process, uh, if a patron is removed from the, um, removed from the library. And because we refer to the patron code of conduct, um, you know, so basically if you don't wear your mask, you're not following the patron code of conduct. Uh, people could be removed from the library, people could be asked to leave. Um, so that is something that we wanted to, um, at least get in front of the board. That's something that's been in the works for, um, many months, but obviously COVID happened and other things came to the forefront. So I did want to make sure that you are aware of that. And if there's any questions or concerns with that, if you, uh, email me in the meantime and we hope to, uh, move that at the next month's meeting.
My apologies, Jamie, I did forget that one.
That's okay. Um, since Trent is taking the notes, I will, uh, discuss the personnel report this month. Um, here Christine Lee, who has been a longtime children's librarian, um, is with, um, I believe, um, so you'll see Matt Stock is, um, unfortunately leaving us. So Christine Lee is increasing her hours back to 40, um, to, um, to compensate for that. Um, Matt, it was actually my very first hire, um, as a, in any of my library service. So he, obviously I have, I was deputy director. When I became deputy director, uh, I participated in all of the hires, um, going forward. And, uh, we happen to have, uh, actually Matt and Christine, um, were hired very close to each other. Um, but he was my first hire and some of you, um, probably know Mr. Matt. He was featured in, uh, one of our Inside Views as a super librarian. And he is, uh, probably most noted for getting the MineCrafters, um, as well as the Guild of the Brick. Um, so he will definitely be missed. He will be spending more time at home with his two children while his wife, um, manages her work schedule at the clinic. So, um, he did go down to 12 hours a week, um, I think, uh, several years ago and has somewhat been maintaining that. And it's just the, the family decision that they need to make, uh, as far as, um, him having to separate. I did tell, I did tell him that I, I, I don't want to see him, um, on the roster at another library. I would, I would hunt him down. So, um, he'll be missed by, by patrons and staff alike. But we're glad that Christine is able to get back to 40 hours a week. And the other separation is Bev Coffey, who is in Circulation. And she is another, uh, instance of having to, uh, spend time with her family. She's actually, um, I think, spending time with her grandchildren. Um, and I think that is somewhat a result of COVID as well. So, um, you know, certainly glad that they're able to, um, spend that additional time with their family, but, um, they are, uh, losses for the library. So that is the personnel report.
All right. Any questions for Jamie regarding this?
Oh, I just wanted to say how my family has been a big fan of Matt and so we were sad to see that. Theatrix, who's now almost 14, still would go up to him and, and say, what's up, chicken butt? From that story he brought to preschool when she was three. He took it and just laughed every time. So he was a great children's librarian.
Yes. So true.
And it still is and hopefully will return someday.
Right. All right, if there are no comments or questions further, may I have a motion to accept the personnel report for July 2020?
This is Jill, so.
Thank you, Jill. May I have a second?
This is Melissa, second.
Thank you, Melissa. Trent, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Benarsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Sanson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, everyone. Uh, before we move on, did anyone have any questions or comments regarding the departmental reports or any questions for Trent as the deputy director? Okay, move on to the president's report. Uh, I don't have anything, I just wanted to, uh, again, extend my thanks and appreciation to our staff. We're moving into kind of uncharted territory here and we do appreciate so much their flexibility and their patience and, um, their service to our community. So I just wanted to make sure that that's conveyed to our staff, okay? All right, committee reports, buildings and grounds, Dan?
Uh, no meeting to report on.
Thank you. And personnel, Dave?
Uh, no meeting to report on, uh, but we did put in there a, a plan to discuss, uh, goals for this year. Uh, we didn't do it last month because the meeting was long and here we are. So, uh, would, would you like me to start that discussion, Audra?
Yes, please, let's go ahead and do that. Um, obviously, um, you know, the strategic plan and just everything regarding the pandemic and, and just day-to-day operations are, um, top priority, obviously. But yes, we do want to spend some time talking about other goals because life will eventually go on. So yes, Dave, please go ahead.
Well, and, and as you said, Audra, if you, if you were reviewing the comments of both Jamie and of the board members who, uh, added comments during the, uh, review process, uh, every one of the comments related to those two subjects in one way or another. Uh, and, and, I mean, part of me says that's the world we're living in right now. Uh, and, and if we can make sure that those pandemic issues are addressed as they have been, uh, and will, and, you know, hopefully could, will continue to be, uh, as, as part of the goals. Um, and the strategic plan itself is a very big thing. And reading, uh, Jamie's report, it's already begun to be addressed. Uh, you know, the implementation, uh, the education first and then the implementation, which is, which is a necessary one-two punch. Um, you know, those are certainly two big goals that if we were successful as an organization and Jamie was success, successful as a leader of our organization, uh, throughout the next year, if he, if we were able to successfully do both of those things, uh, those are pretty, two pretty large, um, uh, things to, to account, uh, two large accomplishments. Uh, having said that now, uh, you know, I, I'd like to open it up to any of the other board members if they have other things they'd like to add to the, uh, to the grouping of those two things and/or if they'd like to get any more specific, specificity, specifics into those two things, excuse me.
So I, I would like to follow up. I think it's been, um, very helpful to me to see those updates that you're including, Jamie and Trent, as far as when you tell us something and then tell us exactly how that's relating to the strategic plan. That's been very helpful to me to see the progress and, uh, you know, the, the traction that you're gaining for that. In addition to that, I also wanted to point out that Greg seems to be following that lead too in his reports when he updates us on things that, um, are specific to the building plan as well. So in all of the reports, and I know that's trickle down from you, Jamie, um, keeping the board updated on things has really been helpful for all of us. So I'd like to see, you know, continuation of that for sure and, and support from you to, uh, the rest of the staff to continue that. All right, anyone else?
You know, my, my only other comment is more or less, uh, of a continuation of what seemingly, uh, seemed to be good personnel relations between, uh, senior management and the staff. Uh, and, you know, important to keep those where they seem to be, at least from the outside looking in. Uh, you know, if, if anything, the, the value of a good staff cannot be underestimated and the necessity of keeping that staff happy and keeping that staff engaged and part of that is through the strategic plan. Uh, you know, it, you know, i- if there were a third leg to the stool right now, I would think it would be just making sure that we keep the staff, uh, working, uh, I don't know what you're just working, keep the staff performing at the level that they have been performing. Uh, and, you know, look forward to that as we get back to normal.
Right.
Yeah, as I've, um, continually mentioned, uh, certainly throughout this pandemic, um, the, the staff in general, um, my team that reports directly to me, but also the staff in general certainly, um, makes my job easier. They make me look better. Um, they're certainly doing, um, a lot of the work and carrying a lot of the burden. Um, so certainly, uh, trying to make sure that we support the staff where we can and, um, acknowledge the staff as well. You know, the, the adult and children's librarians and staff, uh, adapting very quickly to make sure that programs can still happen virtually, uh, manning the tents on the front lawn to do whether it's summer reading sign up or whether it's to pass out summer reading prizes, um, making the visits that they need to. The circulation staff carrying us through with curbside, um, a- as well as getting into the reopening plans and, uh, dealing with the checkouts and patron questions. Um, the computer center staff last month, when, when they took the big step to allow people in and they continue to clean things, uh, between those sessions and deal with the, the patrons, they really were kind of the, the circulation staff and the computer center staff were the ones that were, were kind of our, our beta testers as far as dealing with the public and they have done it very well. Um, our social media team and our marketing team, which incorporates all departments, um, being able to keep us afloat and keep people knowledgeable about what's going on. Technical services staff willing to work from home as well as in the building uh, and to be able to still get the materials on the shelves and, and in people's hands. Um, it, it really is all of them that have made the library continue to be, uh, the computer center that, or the, the community center that we are, although the community can't necessarily meet here right now. Um, but the adaptations that they've made, uh, certainly, uh, has not gone unnoticed.
Right, right, absolutely.
And this calls back, this calls back also to the discussion earlier when somebody mentioned about the healthcare insurance of doing our best not to rock the boat with our current staff. Uh, obviously something may have to give there because, you know, it's, it's a, it's a volatile situation to a degree, but as best we can as an organization to not rock the boat with the current employees during this time, I think is pretty important and it's worth a few extra dollars.
We'll wait to see what, uh, figures Becky returns with and, um, yes, that will be the discussion for the special meeting that we'll probably have to have. Anyone else have any other comments? Did I just see someone raise their hand?
Melissa?
I did. I, I was thinking about, just kind of echoing what you were saying, Audra. I, I really like this idea of, of tying your goals in with this new strategic plan. Um, in particular, the connect and engage part. I, I think, um, what, what Audrey's saying is the connect and, connect and engagement with the staff is a good kind of model and goal, I think, just to continue the good work that's being done there. I think also if we look to our support groups outside the library, to the foundation and to the friends and to the women's group, just to continue to kind of connect and engage and, and get these groups excited, um, and, and feeling really involved in supporting the libraries is something I would emphasize.
Very good, thank you. Jamie, how do you feel that, that those relationships are currently and, and would have been the challenges in this pandemic?
Um, well, the biggest challenge, um, is for the women's committee. Um, they unfortunately have not really been able to meet. Um, nor have they really had access to the building to even be able to sort books or to, to put books out. Um, the staff is, um, managing the book sale area right now. Uh, so some sales can still go on. We also have the little free library building that is outside our building, um, by the, the double handicap spot. And so some items are, are being placed out there. They're free to take, but also, uh, if people choose to leave a donation, they can. Um, so I think the women's committee, uh, has been the hardest hit, although their president, um, Diane has, um, sent, uh, weekly or, um, weekly emails to the entire group and updates them on what the library is doing. And she often has taken walks up here and read the storybook walk and, and, and highlighted the stories that were out there and really is, um, you know, a, a, a bright beacon, um, for that group to at least let them know what is, uh, continuing to happen at the library. Uh, the foundation, I think that we're at a transition point as far as, um, you know, what they're, um, what they want to do to assist and help the library moving forward and that there will be some additional guidelines, um, for doing that. They were previous to this, trying to get an event off the ground to help, uh, some additional funding. That unfortunately, um, will, won't happen during the pandemic, but I think that even just being able to have some of those discussions is definitely, um, like I said, a, a good transition for them moving forward. Uh, our friends group has continued to be strong and are looking to find additional ways also to, uh, raise money. They are actually going to concentrate on the Charlie cart specifically, uh, to help, um, try to get funds specifically raised, uh, to come up with the other $9,000 for, uh, that. So I think that that will, uh, continue to grow and I think that, um, working specifically with Melissa and, and the experience that she has in, uh, development in her, um, uh, previous work, uh, is, is definitely helpful. And the reminders that we get from her to, um, you know, to reach out or to make that additional phone call, um, you know, those are all, all things that, that certainly are welcomed and, uh, become kind of, um, second nature to us as we move through. Uh, and trying to find ways to recognize our volunteers, recognize our, um, our major donors, uh, things like that, um, you know, and just finding ways to do that maybe differently during this pandemic and then once we get back into, um, you know, normal operating procedures that we can continue just some of those practices as we're going, so.
Right.
Definitely a work in progress.
Sure, always, because they evolve as well.
Right.
Yes, it's kind of proactive and reactive all at the same time sometimes. All right, anyone else have any comments or questions regarding the goals for Jamie? Dave, did you have any conclusions or summaries?
It, it, it sounds as if we kind of have three, three major goal areas. One being, you know, uh, addressing the pandemic and, and keeping the library, um, vibrant as best as possible through the pandemic. Um, secondly, um, engaging the staff and, and implementing the strategic plan that's been developed uh, and making it a living document. And, and then thirdly, um, uh, just, uh, keeping up with staff relations to make sure that the staff is, um, energized, engaged, excited about their jobs from day to day so that when the library reopens in all of its glory, uh, they can, they can all be ready to go and, and do the jobs that they've done before and possibly even more.
Right, right. Jamie, do you have anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
No, I think that that kind of sums up. No, I think that that kind of sums up what we're doing. I think even in the conversations that we've had, Audra, um, you know, be- beyond doing my job, that's why you got, that's why we have a job description um, and um, have outlined those things there, um, making sure that the library runs on a day-to-day basis. But to be able to um, make the changes or make the decisions that are needed to, to do those, um, those goals, um, I, I think are in and of themselves monumental. And one of the things that I, I've continually said lately is it's, it's really become taking in all the information um, and trying to make decisions based on um, the greatest amount of good, uh, knowing that we're not necessarily going to please everyone, whether that's staff or whether that's the public or whether that's the community. Um, but to be able to uh, take in all that information, to be able to make the decisions as needed um, and, and on demand uh, a- and knowing what our priorities are. And I think to this point, uh, we've, we've really tried to make sure that the staff understands that, that um, their safety matters, um, that their, that their safety um, and their work environment is, is the number one priority. Um, and then that is followed by, by the patrons, um, and then the community in general. So just making sure that we continue to do that. And, and that's also uh, outlined in the strategic plan. I don't think that that's necessarily something new, but I think it's good that we actually have it outlined, that we want to be a healthy organization, whether it's um, you know, the, the race, ethnicity, inclusion principles, or whether it's the LGBTQ plus principles and um, whether it's um, just making the, the COVID decisions, whether it's making the healthcare decisions, those are all things that are all tied together and we want to be a vibrant, healthy organization uh, in that way as well. So um, I, I don't have any issues with that. Um, I think that it, just getting through all of that as well as all the other things. And, and I'm also understanding that uh, some of the conversations I have with, with my managers, to understand that everybody is dealing with um, the pandemic in different ways and it's affecting them in different ways. And whether that, again, is staff or is the public, um, that yes, there are guidelines and yes, there are procedures, but at the same time, um, we need to be able to make sure that we're, we're adjusting uh, to those needs as needed.
Because yes, they're people, yes, bottom line. Right. And I don't think that the strategic plan could exactly prepare anyone for having to make such big decision, decisions, not only, you know, month by month, but you're having sometimes to make decisions day by day or even hour, you know, the hours before Dewine updates us in the afternoon and the hours after. So um, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
Nothing's normal right now. All right, anyone else have anything? Okay, great conversation, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dave, for that work too.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone have any new business to discuss tonight? Trying to give everybody enough time to chime in and raise their hand and. All right, if there is no new business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, and may I have a second?
This is Jill, I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time tonight.